Good morning. I call it order, the January 29th, 2019, meeting of the Sling County Board of Commissioners. Would clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Wees?
Here.
Commissioner White.
I ask that you please stand and join me in a flag salute, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
(laughter) I don't think they have a law or...
Thank you.
We now move to the public forum portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and items that are not on today's agenda.
Norman Mano Salina attended your jail advisory committee last week, and the word that kept coming up was "population reduction" at the jail. Well, how are you going to achieve that? Because as the population increases, we've got more people that's going to be out there that want to commit crimes, so you're going to have to do a population reduction. Just reducing the population of jails is not going to solve your problem. So, your advisor said "reduction." How are you going to achieve that? You can't do it, can you? You can't do it. It's going to be the good, the bad, and then it's going to get ugly. Next issue I got to discover and discuss is the gravel issue. I traveled your roads for the first time when the weather was bad. I don't know where you're getting your gravel, but you're wasting your money. That stuff is too thick to stir and too thin to plow, so why even put it on? Close the roads. Put a sign up that says "closed due to inclement weather." I've seen your signs in this county. And last night, the city is discussing your fairground issue. You stated your positions. You've stated what you want, and they've stated what you want. Negotiation's over. I don't even know why you're negotiating anymore because you stayed your position. Are you going to settle for less than what you originally started with? I wouldn't. Why would you build a bridge halfway across the river and then quit? It's...you're wasting your time. So, that's...
I'll respond to that for just a second. Normally, well, I'm going to respond, but we're going to waste a little more time then next, I believe it's next Monday, when we meet with the city over that, so we'll waste a little more time.
The 5th or the 3rd of February is when you're doing it?
The 4th of February.
Fourth, yeah.
Fourth, I believe it's Monday, at their regular study session. We will address it and come together, and I'm not going to say we're going to make a decision, but their plan and their proposal and their acceptance of our proposal and vice versa will be on the table. So, there you go.
You need to follow a little more Mr. Trump. Walk away.[487.06][487.06](laughter)
Some people accuse me of that now. All right, anyone else?
Morning.
Good morning.
Joan Rasslove Salina. I serve on the Solid Waste Management Committee, and we recently had two more members added. At least one of them was there at our last meeting on Thursday, Tom Bell, and I want to thank the county commissioners for your efforts in helping to populate our committee. I'm encouraged by that. We still have one vacancy for third-class city and two youth, age 15 to 20 students. So, again, thank you.
You're welcome. I've found that just waiting for someone to look at the website and sign up for these committees, probably not going to happen.
Right.
So, members of that committee, members of our commission, the city commission, they need to recruit. They need to go out and ask people if they'd be willing to sign up, and I think that I've been pretty successful in getting people to sign on, whether it be the planning commission, solid waste, whatever. If you know good people, why...and yourselves, the citizens, seek out other people to fill out that expression of interest, and we'll probably get good people on there then.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
My name's Justin Reynolds. I own Gypson Valley Sporting Clays on Niles Road, and 23 years ago, Craig Stevenson came to the same board, I believe he was a commissioner, and in conditions of his business venture, he was asked for two things primarily: one, to be zoned commercial, and two, to maintain his own road. Well, since then, we've been open 23 years, paid commercial taxes, and rarely missed a day. Now, I will caution you, I'm not a business that operates on a huge profit. We do a lot of things for the community. We do hunter's safety classes, which are the only ones in the county; we do pheasants forever youth hunts, which are here to benefit the county citizens; and we do law enforcement league. I simply can't afford to maintain my road and stay in business, okay? I've spoken with Mr. Sparks, Commissioner Sparks, and several people of the county road department, and because of my increased tax burden and increased insurance burden for being commercial, I can't afford to fix that road. So, I guess I would ask a couple questions. How is this commercial designation benefiting us? I paid $22,000 extra for a building that's a metal building out in a pasture because it had to be up to commercial code. My taxes are three times what an ag designation would be, and currently in the county, we have a paintball field, some pumpkin patches, and everything else that's deemed agricultural. I guess I would question why I have to be commercial.
Good point.
And second of all, I can't get an ambulance and a fire truck down my road, and I'm paying commercial taxes, I feel in my opinion, respectfully, that I need that to happen. We don't want to have an injury out there and not be able to service the citizens of the county. And I have an event coming in March where I'm going to have 200 kids from 11 states, and that, to me, is a big deal, and if I have to cancel that, that is detrimental to the income of me, and it's also going to hurt the counties. They're going to buy motels, they're going to eat, they're going to be here the entire weekend, there's going to be 300 people running around out there. Unfortunately, my parking's just about as bad as your road, but I'm working on that. But if there's anything we can do, I'd really like to know how we can proceed with this. I'm going to be very persistent. I'm going to be contacting all of you on a regular basis because there is some urgency. And I know, I'm not complaining about the county road department. He probably doesn't have to go down my road, but he does the best job he can with what's there. As a matter of fact, he was just there yesterday. Two weeks ago, we had ruts that were 14 inches deep, and I had to cancel business for the weekend, and subsequently, that was a youth hunt for kids 14 and under. So, I thank you for your time, and if you don't mind, I've got a couple quick questions. If you could just write them down, or I could give you this, and you could answer, either way.
Go ahead and give us the questions, and we'll...
I want to know how often the roads evaluated to determine the need to rethink the classification. I had, this weekend, I had 42 vehicles travel down my road on Sunday. And, excuse me, I'm not the best public speaker. If the decision to not maintain the road to access my commercial property is made, are you guys willing to rezone me ag so I can afford to fix my road? And what steps do I need to take to get this thing going? I've...seems like I've hit roadblocks for...forever trying to get this through the system. I've tried for a couple years now, so...
If you have those written down, if you'd leave them with the administrative people over here, I'd appreciate that, and we'll certainly address them, look into it, and try to get you some answers very quickly.
Okay.
And Justin, tell me, once again, was it South Gypson Valley Road? Is that one?
Actually, it's Niles Road.
Niles Road.
Yeah, so K-4 Highway to Lapsley, which is an earthen road per your map. It originally was maintained, and then they tore a house down and switched its designation. So, we're back to earthen 24 years ago. So, if I could get some answers on that, I would greatly appreciate it.
Okay, obviously, probably not going to get any concrete answers from us right now, but we do have a road and bridge director here also today, so in our second study session, I'm sure those things will be at least talked about, and see if we can get you some answers.
I appreciate your time and look forward to your response.
And it's helpful that, I just want to say, it's helpful that you come to us and say stuff like this. This is the first I've heard of it.
Sure.
So, it'd be an opportunity for me to drive by and see, and I'm not saying that I have all the answers, but at least I have the information now.
Well, they've laid it out nicely. You've got a pretty good road right now, but I wish you'd have came three days ago.
All right.
But I appreciate it.
Appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to address the commission?
Last week, the commission...
Please state your name for the records, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Karen Shade Salina. In a study session, the commission took up the possible need for expanding the jail. Three things that came to mind just from the presentation: Jim Robertson's name wasn't really on the report, just the initials of his business. The date, there's two dates on the report. It would have been nice to have known who the other committee members were that helped shape that. And third, he doesn't quote sources on the things that I thought were most important. There was a...he was saying that there was a very conservative 1% estimate for growing the population. If 1% is very conservative, I think you all need to know what the less conservative views are. And if we're dealing with declining population, the part where we figure of a possible expansion of 464 beds, allowing for a 15% capacity reserve, that might mean an inmate count of 400. 400 with a declining population means we're moving from having about half a percent of our population in jail closer toward the 1%. So, that's concerning to me. You've seen some emails from me about the committee to reduce the jail population, which is kind of, I know, is a separate thing. Five years ago or so, this commission took up doing bylaws. The one thing, I don't know if you've revisited those bylaws to see if they're still current for how that committee operates. It was supposed to be open to the public, and it initially was announced in your month -- or, excuse me, your weekly agenda packet. I haven't seen those meetings announced, and maybe things have changed, and maybe you want to do things differently. That's fine, but I would suggest that maybe you need to look at amending those bylaws. I do think you are at a stage with the committee to reduce the jail population of maybe including someone with some civil rights or NAACP or some kind of background there. And those are just my opinions for what they're worth. I'll probably...oh, I put before you two articles. The one pager, I gave one to Commissioner Vidrickson, Rita Deister, Annie Grievous, Jason Beetz. The one page is kind of an outdated point of view that says casual fornication and inadequate parenting produces criminals. This other article is much more, it's dated 2001. The other article just came out in Psychology Today. It's got lots of good references about kids with conduct disorders. The one figure that's stuck in my mind is, if it doesn't get resolved, kids with conduct disorders, 3% will become...3% of males will become criminals or have antisocial personality disorder, and 1% of females. And it talks about how, you know, I think we've come to realize, good parents can have kids or raise children that end up in the jail system. And it talks about heart rates and skin conductivity and how different areas of the brain light up, and there's a whole lot of updates on, you know, kind of where the cutting edge is on this for treating juveniles. But what the one thing it does say is that works is a version of CBT and what sounds like a modified version of community corrections, and it only works if you're staying on top of that individual. And so, I don't know how valid this stuff is, but I thought it should be brought before you, so that's what I've done, and I'll be back.
Right. Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to address the commission?
Rex Satcher here in Salina, Kansas. I used to be one of the owners of Gypson Valley Sporting Clays, and we sold it off to Justin. The club's almost like a public service as far as making a lot of money. We spend a lot of money. I've spent countless hours teaching kids gun safety, shooting skills, lots of things about that. We also have two schools, two high schools, that are going to start shooting out there because we now have shooting teams. So, I'm a little concerned with those roads being so bad that with all these young people driving up and down and that, that we'd like to have a little bit of help there. So, Justin's offered, he's paying for all the targets for the shooting teams, which is pretty big of him, because it'll be pretty expensive. So, anyway, we'd really appreciate you guys looking at this and see if you can help me out a little bit. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. And once again, to echo Commissioner Shadwick's comments, that it is helpful when the public does step forward and addresses, and we can get an audience with our entire staff to address these positions. So, thank you very much. Anyone else wish to address the commission? Seeing then, I'll bring it back to the commission for regular business. Item number one.
Approve agenda for public forum as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda for the public forum as presented.
Second motion.
Been moved, and second that we approve today's agenda for the public forum. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number two.
RFA 108-19, Resolution 19-2268, Rural Fire District Number 5, Board Member Appointment with Hannah Stanbaugh, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, Hannah.
Good morning, commissioners. This is a request for action to approve the resolution to appoint Mr. Mark Splitter to the Board of Trustees for Rural Fire District Number 5. Mr. Splitter, this appointment is a new appointment after a previous board member declined to renew his term for another three years. Mr. Splitter's term would be effective from February 1st, 2019, until December 31st of 2022. At that time, he would be eligible for reappointment if he so desired. The alternatives that you have is to approve the appointment or disapprove the appointment as to where the board would have to solicit new applications. Our recommendation is to approve the appointment. This particular individual has served not only the district for several years, but also is willing to volunteer and serve his time as a board member of their Board of Trustees for Rural Fire District Number 5.
Hannah, District Number 5 is Headville?
No, that is the New Cambria area, so the northeast part of the county. Correct.
With the station there on Simpson Road?
Yes, they've got two stations on Simpson Road.
Both of them on Simpson Road, north and south?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and he does live in that area, or in that area covered by Number 5?
Yeah, he has been with Rural Fire District Number 5 as a firefighter for, oh, gosh, probably a good 20 years. He's an outstanding gentleman, so I think he will serve them very well on their board.
Any other questions from the commission and comments from the public? If not, I'll bring it back and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we appoint Mark Splitter to the Board of Trustees for Rural Fire District Number 5 as requested.
Second motion.
It's been moved, and second that we approve, RFA 108-19, appointing Mark Splitter to the Board of Trustees for Rural Fire District Number 5. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Hannah.
Thank you, commissioners.
Move on to item number three.
The Idle Funds Report with Jim DuBois, County Treasurer.
Good morning, Jim.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm glad to present our fourth quarter idle fund report, which has surpassed my expectations. If you look three quarters way down the page, in the first quarter, we had earned $110,000 compared to $63,000 last year, so we have a plus bonus of $47,000. Second quarter was $140,000 compared to $66,000 last year, which gave us in addition a $74,000. The third quarter was $168,000 compared to $83,000 last year, which gave us $85,000 in addition. In the fourth quarter was $169,000 compared to $97,000, which gave us $71,000, $71,704. So, the interest earnings for 2018 at the end of December 31st gave us $588,318.2 compared to $319,735 last year. And if you look down the list of the interest earned for the years, the last time that we earned that much money was back in 2008, which was $564,727, and we surpassed that. My goal, which I would hope to see someday, I don't know that I will in my lifetime, though, would be to that next point where we earn $1,328,000. But I'm well pleased. Right now, interest rates and mutual funds are running at about a 2.2%, and the highest that we've seen so far is a 2.93, which we're earning in the seven institutions that we have our idle funds in. So, with that, I'll be open for questions.
Is that...that money, is that in the county's general fund?
No, it's divided into seven different banks. So, we have some in Bennington State Bank, and we have some in the Bank of Tuscan and American State Bank, and so on. So, it's divided into our seven banks.
Refresh me, for the public's information, mine too for that matter, of how much, what the reserves are specified as, or the number that's there for us that we should keep on hand for emergencies and so forth? Isn't there a number?
There is, but he invests any extra money, and then he makes sure that the cash flow's there, but he continues to invest it, so there is cash flow. So, this is separate from what you have in your budget.
Okay, and what is that number for our reserves?
I can't tell you off the top of my head. Can you remember?
At the end of the year...
You're supposed to be smarter than me. I can't remember it either.
Yeah, we can look it up very easily. We know where to find it.
Okay, and I think that, you know, that's a number that most of us gets away from us, and the public would probably like to be informed on that number.
At the end of the year, by the time we're done paying all the taxing entities, we have about $21 million in the bank, and right now, we are within a percentage point of collections. So, for 2018, our year-to-date collections so far has been 57.21% compared to 58.19 of last year, so we're pretty even compared to where we were.
You know, that sounds like a lot of money. I mean, and obviously, it is a lot of money, but with the projects and the ongoing things that are on the table for the county, it doesn't even touch it, you know, so...
No, you're absolutely correct.
I mean, we'd eat that up in a heartbeat with one fell swoop of the pen, that's for sure, and not get everything covered either.
You're right. We have, right now, in investments, $8,650,000 in our idle fund investments.
All right. Further questions?
Question for staff. When we did the 2018 budget, you projected out what you thought interest would be?
That's correct, yeah.
Did this fall within your projections? Was it a little higher, a little lower? Have you...
We always project a little low, just in case, and with the economy, we didn't know at the time we did that budget whether they were going to...interest rates would continue to climb, so we're going to be conservative compared to what we're getting.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Further questions? All right. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, we'll move on to item number four.
RFA 109-19, Next Tech Service Agreement with Annie Grievous, Community Corrections Director.
Good morning, Annie.
Community Corrections is requesting the commission to approve and sign a 36-month service agreement for 2020 symmetrical internet, whatever that means. I just know our internet where we currently are with AT&amp;T is slow, and we are promised that if we go this route, it'll significantly increase it. We have a huge hub and 40-some computers going all the time, and state systems, and you name it, and so we need increased connectivity and speed. So, it's at $120 per month, it's a 36-month contract. The total will be $4,320 or $1,440 per year. I'm seeking approval for the commission to approve and to sign, please.
I guess my obvious question would be why the Community Corrections isn't on the same contract as the rest of the county, as far as internet goes. Kevin, can you respond to that?
Do...I'm sorry.
I'm asking why Community Corrections, their internet service can't be hooked on to what normally the county is.
I'm not sure I can give you an answer to that at this point. I haven't really looked into this, so I can't give you an answer at this point. I think...
And I'm not going to give you an answer. I want you to go and post up anywhere.
Okay.
If I remember correctly, there were times, because we were outside of the county building and some other things, and I know the sheriff's offices, but there were some concerns about the speed of it at that point, too. I don't know if that still exists. I haven't...Sherry might have talked to Brad in doing this effort. I'm not sure, but... not sure, but.
I do know that when you went into your building, Nextech was not available.
Right.
And that, so we had to do, it's AT&amp;T, and that, we had to do that because they weren't there yet, and we were planning on going to Nextech.
And what are, what are we on here? Nextech?
We're on Nextech here, yes.
So that's the reason we didn't do it at the time she moved in, it wasn't there yet.
We were previously on Nextech in our old building in Santa Fe, but as Rita reminded me, you're right, we, the wiring and things weren't available where we were. And for some reason, we couldn't get Nextech, so we invested in AT&amp;T, and now we can get Nextech, and we want to go back there. We don't, we aren't, I don't think we were ever on the same contract as the county, but we use the same provider at that time when we, when we were still housed on Santa Fe.
Well, obviously, some of this flies over the top of my head, but I, I would like kind of an answer on that Andrew, if we can.
It comes down to locations. You can't have, you, like you said, you could be on the same contract per se, but you're still going to pay for these services separately because it's a different location.
So in other words, if we were to put them on the same contract with the rest of the county, more than likely, our contract price would, would increase by?
$120.
There you go. That's, that's.
And we would pay that also, we would just have to reimburse the county.
Sure.
This is just probably less red tape, us just paying directly to Nextech.
Okay. That answers my questions, I think. So, other questions or comments from the Commissioners?
And Nextech is going to be running a fiber optic to that building? And is that, I think, somewhere I read in there?
Well, I don't want to say yes. I believe that's correct. I should have brought Sherry maybe today, she's the one that has done some of this. But yes, I believe that's true, and everything was said. We wanted them in the beginning, but they weren't accessible to our building.
Well, the reason why I ask, because it says Nextech proposes to provide fiber-connected services for phone, internet, television service for their business location in Slyna, Kansas. I didn't know if that meant for Nextech's service for their business, or at this business.
Where are you reading that? I'm sorry.
Nextech Business IT Solutions.
Oh, on the contract?
Yep.
It didn't reach to our business.
That's what, but that's.
It's a pretty standard contract, I looked at it the other day. And this has been in front of Mike Montoya, I want you to know.
Okay.
But I think that means for us.
Okay.
But I guess I'm going to call back on Mike Montoya to prove it.
Well. Well, I'm certain that if, if, if they're, the fiber optics would be run to it, or you wouldn't have service, so. I mean, but they could still run a T1 hard line there.
Yeah, you're going to say a lot of things to me, and I might have lied.
And here's the boss, he probably knows.
Oh, there he is.
Mr. Chair, if I could move things along, this is a pretty simple, move we sign this service agreement with Nextech.
Yep. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any public comment regarding the Nextech service agreement? Seeing then, I'll bring it back to the commission and call for the question. It has been moved in second that RFA, that we approve RFA 109-19, Nextech Service Agreement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner. Item number five.
Community Corrections Update with Annie Greivis, Community Corrections Director.
Thank you.
Morning Annie, again.
I'm going to go through this square, because I know it's a lot. You'll see a.
Hold on a second Annie.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I certainly can. Thank you.
I thought sure the sound of her voice would just carry anyway.
I know what Andrew's thinking, she doesn't need that microphone on.
Well, maybe others might think that, too, I don't know.
Well, I'm just, I'm just picking on Andrew right now, there's lots of people know that. Okay, so I attached the statistics between our adult and juvenile populations and broke all that out. It's, I want to say it's clear cut, but it might not be clear cut to you, but it's everything I've talked about to you, and how many programs we offer to our juvenile and our adult population, and it just talks about ADP new and released clients, so there's a good data there for you if you want to go through it. We've had a lot of staffing changes in the last six months, not necessarily people just leaving, but expanding programs and other things that we're doing. We are seeing a large increase in the number of clients, both our juvenile and our adult, and we're seeing, as you all know, as we deal with the jail population, longstanding mental illness and substance abuse, and we're seeing more and more of that on a regular basis. With the pre-trial program that's going, we did promote someone within, Andrew Pellant is our pre-trial coordinator, so his position has to be replaced. And then we are still advert, are going to interview on the 6th of February for both his position replacement, the adult ISO, and a pre-trial ISO. So there's two positions. The applicants look really good right now, so we're excited to interview on the 6th. Lots is going on, we continue to meet with the judges. Andrew went over to the jail on Saturday and did a lot of assessments on various clients, and all that data was put into a spreadsheet after he reviewed it with me yesterday and sent to the judges for review. We're asking for more, not more people, more names they want assessed, because many of them refused, unlikely so, they're in for crimes that wouldn't impact pre-trial, but also some had gotten out. And so we're asking for some more names, so we can continue to go through this assessment, the two drafts, and then let the judges make the final determination on which tool they want to utilize. We're still set for a mid-March startup date to start taking pre-trial clients. The whole process is very interesting, when Andrew and I sat down, and, and the two draft tools and everything, there's a lot of interest there, and it's, it's really fascinating to me because of the time I've had in the field, but I think the pre-trial will really be a good tool, and I, I'm excited to get it started. So I hope we don't go, have to go much beyond March, mid-March. Kyle Jones replaced, I say Andrew Pellant's position, but he didn't replace Andrew Pellant, he replaced Dave Irving. Dave moved from juvenile to adult. We hired Kyle Jones, who comes from Geary County Law Enforcement. He's an amazing asset, he picked up the skills right away, he's got a real passion for this. Dave Irving went from juvenile over to the adult, and he's doing really good work. We hired Caitlin Dutrow, she replaced the juvenile officer, and she resides in Manhattan, and she's right out of college, but she's doing a great job, and I even offered an opportunity to interview for the other positions, she said no, she was happy where she was. So, you know. Heidi Morrison was promoted to be under Sherry Kraus, the, under the grant budget specialist, and we have two fairly new front office people, Chelsea and Gwen. Our office is super busy, and that hub at the front is where everything comes in daily, so it's a very, very busy office. I continue to be happy with the new space and only see us growing into it. I'm already looking at adding another cubicle area for staff, so I want to do it in the most effective way and not make it a crazy maze eventually like we had. I may have to just get a sledgehammer and bust a little hole through the wall and put something there, I don't know yet, I'll see. I want to say, our landlord is amazing. He responds immediately. I text him, he's there that day. He constantly is working to help us increase our efforts to make the building a more practical solution for our clients and our staff, and he is just really, really good. So we're excited that we have that great relationship. With the revolving staff, we have, or changes in staff, we have them attending hours and hours of state mandated training. Because staff have been in our office for so long, because we don't have a lot of turnover, I wish I could just let them stay in our office and train with us, because we know what we're doing and how's it going, but state mandates it, so I've got three right now in Topeka for four days, going through a system we've already showed them and have already started working on. With the new government, new leadership's going on right now at KDOC. The transition team is made up of previous connections that I've had for a long time, so I'm excited. I've already started working a little bit with them. We were in Topeka last Friday and spoke with them. I like their way of approach. They were the ones, the first ones that brought evidence-based practices and everything we do now for the last 16 years to Kansas. So I'm, I'm excited about that work. And as we work on the jail overcrowding, I forwarded some bills. I track bills that are going to be introduced to legislation throughout the year, and I track the ones that impact, of course, Community Corrections and dealing with our clients, but I also try to now put my jail hat on and remember that some bills that I might think are, look good, aren't that favorable for the county and the jail. So I did forward some information on yesterday and everything I could, so that they're prepared to talk to legislators regarding some of that. So I'll try to keep that going, because I, I do a really good job. Michelle and I just really follow all those bills and, and will track them, and I'll go up and I'll testify over the next several months in, in support of the ones that will be good for Community Corrections. I'll stay neutral on the ones that might impact the jail. What's happening is, I sent Rita and a few others a presentation Roger Rolholtz made to the legislators a week ago, and he basically starts out that for the last eight years, you haven't, you've been lied to by the past people. And he shows pictures of what the last administration called incidents at the prisons, and it was a full-out riot. I mean, lots of fires, complete damages in lots of the areas, every prison was affected. He shows stab wounds on the officers that work in the prisons. I mean, there were some serious things going on, and much like what you're looking at with the jail, they're way down on keeping staff there, their pay is ridiculous for what they're expected to do. So it's all those kind of things that we look at locally also. And so I think what's, you're going to see more and more is that they're going to look for ways to reduce that population and push it down somewhere else. And that's what this bill that I sent to a few people, Roger and I think Andrew and Rita got it, that's exactly what they're doing, moving away from a prison opportunity for us to send for sanction and saying, let's put it in the jail. Well, unless you get funds for it, it's an unfunded mandate. So I just want to let you know that I'll keep on that, too, and I'm sure Andrew and others follow those things, but we'll try to keep on top of that. We've got our grant allocations, they're due May 1st, like always, you guys have seen me a million times in front of you. We typically write a grant for probably a little over a million, and we usually get around 8,050 or 900,000. So that's kind of where we're at. On the juvenile side, it's very similar, we usually get about 800,000. We were always right for, by the time I do a budget, in my dream world, it's a little over a million, and we'd usually get 2,000 less, so that's just how it always is.
You mean 200,000 less?
Yeah. I wish it was 2,000 less, yes, 200,000 less, sorry. So anyway, but I will be working on that, and we've already started, because I want to really, really show the data this year and really talk about our population and those kind of things. And so we're already setting up sub-communities within the office and gathering the data and moving on. And it'll always go in front of the advisory board first, then it comes to Salina and Ottawa County for final approval and to DOC May 1st. The same things on the juvenile side that I've talked about. I think we're going to see some significant changes at the state level on the juvenile side, which I'm very excited about. So I think that instead of us, the juvenile side always having to catch up, we're actually going to be on the same page. But I don't anticipate any funding surprises or anything. This new administration is a try, is here for about eight months, and they're going to report to the governor about replacements, so I don't expect anything really different. I said in the first line, no grants will come out, but over the last three days, they have come out. Due to the government shutdown, a federal grant that I was fully approved for, about $80,000, wasn't coming to us, but got notification on Friday, it was released, we got fully funded for it. It supports our drug, drug court program, and so I'm excited to get that back and have that money going. I do anticipate filing an application with the City Alcohol Tax Fund, I think that might come open in October, I'll be looking for that. I think that's real important, that the city invests in our drug court and our population of offenders with substance abuse and mental illness, if I can tap it into that, because I'd say three-fourths of our clients live in the city limits, they don't live in the county, they live in the city limits. And because the statute mandates you all to accept Community Corrections and make us county employees, that doesn't change our population. And the city's not, I've never asked the city for dollars, but I think it's time to step up and show the, you know, I've got 500 adult offenders, and three-fourths of them live in the city, and a large, large portion of them work and pay their taxes and do the things they're supposed to do. So I'm going to hit that with that, and I'm hoping I can get some dollars additionally for that. In addition to that, we're working on a very large poverty grant that compares poverty and the lack of health care. We met with Family Healthcare Center and Jason Tiller last week, and we're going to look to serve persons and families within all the services, those agencies. But I want to focus on wellness and not address serious health issues that are existing now in them. They can get those services through the state. But we want to get families and children in for an annual physical, an annual eye exam, and an annual dental exam. We can do all that at the Slyna Family Care's Clinic, and with assistance of Jason and our agency, and me writing that grant with some assistance from them. I'm real excited about it, I'm constantly doing research and looking for it. The biggest thing is, it's hard to find a good 200, $300,000 grant that focuses on a smaller area. But I'm working with the Kansas Health Foundation, and they are going to continue to provide me information. Those grants are out there, I just have to tap into the right one. The advisory board review, I don't, we meet, you know, like we always do, all grants, funding documents, everything goes to them first prior to the board getting the stuff to the new, commit, to the commission. And the drug court experience since 2013, funding so gracious, Salina County Community Corrections and Federal Grant covers that. We've had a total of 84 graduates, 94% success rate with all UA tests being negative, retention rate at 88%, keeping all clients within the program and active, and new drug convictions are amazingly low, 7%. So when you go on the United States and you look at drug court outcomes, especially this far in, we're quite a few years in, their drug convictions and UA percentages are three times larger than ours. So what I want to say to you is that it doesn't mean we won't hit a blip, it doesn't mean that these won't change at some point, but they're really doing a good job, and I attribute that to the funds, but also to the Judge Johnson and the staff that run that program. And that's all I have.
Annie, I've got a couple of quick questions, and maybe relevant, I'm not certain, but your, two, two of your new hires, Kyle and Caitlin, live in Junction City in Manhattan.
Yes.
Do they have plans to relocate here or not?
No.
Are there, are the, is their employment at your office? I mean, is that where their job is?
Yes, they drive every day. They drive every day. I have, so Caitlin and Andrew, Andrew Pellant lives in Manhattan, they drive every day. I have Dave and Paula who live in McPherson, and I have Kyle and Cindy Davis, they live in the Abilene area, and every one of them drives here every day. They only, they do miss sometimes because of weather, that's happened a couple times, but rarely. They just are impeccable. They get here and, you know, I know they're on the road. Andrew has called me at 6:15 and started out and talking about pre-trial and things that come to his head, and I told him to stop calling me at 6:15, he can tell me when he gets to work. But they are just amazing, and it works. And they're grateful that Salina County years ago dropped the residence requirement, because that's where their families are, and that's where they want to live.
Further questions from the commission? Comments? Hearing then, thank you very much for your report.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thanks.
We'll move on to item number six.
RFA 106-19, Bid Award for Dump Trucks with Darren Fischel, Roden Bridge Administrator.
Good morning Darren.
Good morning Commissioners. We're here to talk about some dump trucks that we went out, I've just got a few pictures over here. The truck was out working, this is our stock photo, this is the truck we're looking at purchasing here, type, this type, stainless steel bed equipped with a spreader and a snowplow. We did have a vehicle that burned up in a snowstorm, it had, this was one we purchased off, from KDOT on a Purple Wave Auction. It had 250,000 miles, and it was a 1999. It had an engine fire that subsequently got up in the dash and destroyed all the wiring. got up in the dash and destroyed all the wiring. The insurance company did give us some funds for that. That's in the RFA. And this is the other truck that is up for replacement. This is a 2002 Freightliner that has 406,000 miles. As you can see, it is, it's due. And so, this is the award of a contract for the purchase of two new dump trucks equipped with salt spreaders and snowplows. Sealed bids were opened on January 14th of 2019 at the City-County Building. Three bids were received, and all specifications were verified. They are as follows. Truck Center Companies of Salina, Kansas bid 12019 Freightliner for $163,814 and 12020 Freightliner for $167,516 for a total of $331,330. Summit Group of Salina, Kansas bid two 2020 trucks, international trucks, at $167,600 apiece for a total of $335,200. And Truck Center Companies of Salina also did bid two 2020 Freightliners at $167,516 for a total of $332. The alternatives for action would be to reject all and rebid. Staff recommends accepting the bid from Truck Center Companies for $331,330 for one 2019 Freightliner and one 2020 Freightliner. Truck Center Companies has informed us they have one on the lot that is deliverable in March. This would fit our needs as we have had a snowplow truck catch fire in November. The vehicle was a total loss. We did receive $20,900 from insurance that will go into the special equipment fund. The second truck will be deliverable in the August-September timeframe. Salina County pre-approved a new dump truck in the 2019 Equipment Improvement Plan, or the EIP. The first truck was to be purchased from the EIP account. The second truck will be purchased from our special equipment fund to replace the one that burned up. The special equipment fund is used for emergency equipment replacement in total loss situations like this. While many of the department's fleet is covered by insurance, it is often not for the full replacement cost. This account covers the unfunded portion of our uninsured or underinsured liability in the event of a department-wide disaster. The budget impact would be approval of 12019 and 12020 Freightliner. 108 SD with piles and spreaders will impact two line items. One is our Roden Bridge Line Item 011, capital outlay account, which is our 2019 budget. That account currently has a balance of $290,925 minus the $163,814 for the 2019 Freightliner. That will leave a remaining balance of $127,111. Our special Roden Bridge Machinery Fund, the O2O account, has $1,767,603. With the proposed purchase of the 2020 Freightliner for $167,516, that will leave a remaining balance of $1,600,8794. These two trucks will replace the 1999 KDOT purchased from Purple Wave in 2013 with 250,000 miles and the 2002 Freightliner with 406,000 miles.
Okay, Darren, thank you. Are all of our dump trucks snowplow-equipped or capable?
No, no, they are not.
And how many dump trucks do we have?
You know, we try to shoot for seven, which is a map coverage.
And how many of those are equipped? None of them, or?
We have, we have 10 dump trucks, and we have seven that are, that are snowplow-capable.
Okay. That's kind of what I was getting at there. Okay, further questions from the commission?
I've got a couple of you, Darren. Of course, the insurance company took over ownership of the one that burned up, I would assume. The other one, is that going to Purple Wave, or?
This one here, it will, we will reuse the plow and the spreader and put it on a newer truck. And this truck here, we will, I will contact Rick and see if he has a need for a truck, and then we will put it on Purple Wave if he does. Rick over at the Expo Center.
And on the, on the beds, I assume this is not a stainless steel bed?
It is not.
And how long have you been purchasing the stainless steel beds?
I want to say five years now.
Okay. Do you, in the future, are those beds will be retro onto new chassis because they're stainless steel, or we always be bidding a bed with the chassis?
You know, my goal is to, is to get our, our truck replacement into a two-year rotation. And as these ones with the stainless steel get down into the rotation, the miles that get put on them will be less. So, hopefully, we will be able to look at putting those on a chassis.
Thank you.
I have another question. I think about a year ago, when we got into this process of looking at vehicles, we also determined that the state many times had, had these vehicles. Did we look at the state's opportunity to purchase here this time?
We did. We did. We looked at the state contract, and then we also looked at the dealers here in town and decided to let them bid on it. We knew what the state contract was going to come in at.
Okay. All right. I'm just making sure that we did check with the state.
We did.
And I assumed that you would have. So, further questions?
And you have a proposal of trying to get to a two-year rotation, and so every two years, you're replacing a couple?
Yes. Now, that, now, when we get to the point where we have six or seven of these, of these, what I call, good snowplow trucks, then it won't be buying one of these every two years. It'll be regular dump truck, then one of these, regular dump truck, then one of these, and then hopefully get to the point where we can buy chassis and look into see what it's, what it would cost to put these on the other ones.
Are you looking at the same situation as where we are with the motor graders? Is that where going with people that will go, "Okay, if you turn in these trucks with X amount of miles on them," or not that type of deal?
No, no, no. This is just a straight purchase. We did look into leasing trucks like that, but with our use, nobody, nobody will, the way we use them.
Got you. All right. Thank you.
Further questions, comments? Any public comment?
Norman, Manaus, Salina. I understand, I know it's a money issue, but why aren't we upgrading to newer trucks that have less mileage on them? They're not available. We can't find trucks with lower mileage on them.
I don't understand.
Why aren't we buying newer trucks? Why are we buying one with so many miles on them?
You're talking about the state trucks that we purchased a few?
Any trucks.
We do purchase new trucks. That's what we're looking at.
The one that was purchased, Norman, let me, let me interject for a second. The one that was purchased that was burned up was a fill-in truck that they added to their staff some time ago. All of the trucks I think that you're buying are basically new trucks. So, we're not buying used equipment. Very, only on an occasion would we buy the used equipment that would, that did burn up. And even though it did burn up, it, I guarantee you, they got the use out of it before it unfortunately caught on fire.
I mean, that's my question. Why are we buying something with mileage on it? Why not buy a new one? I understand. It's about money.
Well, when it's a fill-in truck, and you can purchase, and I'll just throw a number out there, $30,000 versus $167,000, I'll let you make the decision which one you wanted to buy out of your tax dollars.
Yeah, it's about money.
All right. Thank you. Bring it back to the commission if there's no other public comments, possible action?
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid for two dump trucks to Truck Center Companies in the amount of $331,330.
Second. Been moved in second that we approve RFA 106-19 for the bid award for dump trucks. Is there any further comments? I will mention, I really am happy that we're able to leave the contract here in Salina, so. All right. It's been moved in second that we approve RFA 106-19. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Is there any other business or announcements? I would like to tell everyone that I did attend the Chamber of Commerce meeting on last Wednesday morning. Also went to Topeka on Wednesday afternoon for Local Government Day. We heard from the KAC Legal Counsel, Jay Hall, regarding legislative priorities for 2019 for the, for the KAC. He did mention that the tax lid, you know, that it's not going to be repealed, I can assure you. But there will be some things that's going to help the counties out, I think, in the long run, that will come out from underneath the tax lid that we can, you know, health care and different insurance policies and things like that. So, we've given you a further update as those come along, but that's going to happen. Thursday, then, I did also attend the KAC Governing Board Meeting, a lengthy, at sometimes boring meeting, but it was very helpful, and I appreciate being on that board. So, that having been said, we will be adjourning here shortly for meeting number two in the adjoining room after a short break. So, I would take a motion for adjournment.
So, moved.
Second. Been moved in second that we adjourn. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. We're adjourned.